Good evening and welcome to the business meeting of December 19th, 2022. Please stand for the pledge. It is being recited tonight or being led by Mrs. Demais' kindergarten class. And it's on the screen.
Mrs. Demais' Kindergarten. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Demais' class. It's so nice to start with students. So the first thing on our agenda is public comment on any of the agenda items. Does anybody have anything to speak on any of the agenda items? Okay. The treasurer's reports for July, August, September, and October 2022 are available in the business office. We're going to start with the consent agenda, number one. Mr. O.
Yes. We've resolved to approve the consent agenda, items two through 13, as presented to the board at this meeting.
The consent agenda tonight includes approval of minutes from the previous meeting, CSE/CPSE placements, approval of updates to the 2223 substitute listing, approval of additional work hours for various staff members, approval of two budget transfers, approval of a team merger for softball with Haldane, Putna Valley being the lead school. We're amending the probationary term for a previously tenured teacher who has now provided all the required info. We're accepting a donation from Hope for Youth, an amount of $5,000 for the middle school homework booster club. We're amending the appointment of the high school 504 coordinator to reflect Matt Mello as president, excuse me, as principal of the high school. We're amending the appointments for DASSA coordinators at the high school and middle school to reflect the change in assistant principals in those buildings. We're authorizing the superintendent schools to enter into agreements with Yorktown Schools for a classified student and Partners in Safety, which is used by our, for mandated testing of our bus drivers for the Department of Transportation. And we're approving unpaid time off for a staff member.
Helen, can you second it? Did you second it? Second. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The consent agenda passes. We're going to move now into reports. We're going to do the student reports first, but there are no students here. But I know Dr. Luft will talk to what the students have been doing, so the second report is Dr. Luft's report.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So we actually received very exciting news this morning. Friday was the deadline for the eighth grade students in Garrison to select which high school they plan to attend next school year. And this morning we were notified that six students, so it's approximately 25% of the eighth grade class have decided to attend Putna Valley High School next school year. So obviously, this is the first year of this agreement with Garrison. And I'm very pleased with the number of students that took advantage. There's a lot of history there between specifically Garrison and Haldane, as well as O'Neill. So the fact that nearly 25% of their students decided to come to Putna Valley next year, I think, is a great first step. And it's a number that I hope we'll see continue to grow over the years as Putna Valley becomes a more familiar choice for those students. Ms. Levine has been working with several of our administrators to offer a variety of parent workshops. We held a Steered Street Assembly on 11/17. It was actually during our last board meeting and Social Media and You presentation last week. We're continuing to explore ways to get more parents out to participate in these, but we did see more parents at the Social Media and You than we did at the Steered Street. And we have upcoming workshops, including mental health first aid and some other choices for parents. So stay tuned for those, that information, and we hope to continue to see parents come out and take advantage. We had a meeting with representatives in the Putna County Department of Mental Health. We spoke about grant funding, opportunities for shared services, and really embracing the circle of care for our families to make sure that those in need are able to receive the services that they need. We did some core values work at our elementary school during a faculty meeting this month. It was amazing to see how many common themes emerged from our teachers and our staff members. And the last sort of piece of that puzzle, the last two pieces of that puzzle will be feedback from the high school, which is scheduled to take place in January. And then all that information will be shared out with our students to help get a sense as to what their core values are. Ultimately, that work will go back to our district steering committee, and our core values for the district will be identified and then shared out. Our high school theory of knowledge class did presentations in the high school library. Students were asked to select a prompt in which they would respond and provided three different artifacts to support their position. Just amazing to see the depth of thought that goes into the presentations that these students presented. And just a kudos to Dr. Messera and all the students in that TOK class. One of the highlights each year is our gratitude festival held at Putna Valley High School, right in our band room. So always impressed by how talented our students are and how many alumni come back to participate in the event. And fantastic, just kudos to Mr. Odell, Dr. Messera, and the students from the Music Honor Society who organize this event each year. Our district advisory council met. We finalized our whom to contact document, which is now available online. And we're working to identify strategies to promote parent engagement. The prompts that were provided to the committee members were what do parents want to learn, know, or share? How do we get parents to join or participate? Why is this work important to our students? And ultimately, trying to achieve a goal of improved parent engagement. We've begun our budget seizing, as we'll find out in our last presentation this evening. But we're beginning to meet with buildings and departments as we look to build our budget for the 2324 school year. There's a variety of holiday donation drives that occur on the underway, toy drive, pajama drive, amongst others. So if you're interested in giving, please contact any one of our clinicians or just be on the lookout for information coming out from the school district. Our DEI committee met earlier this week, reviewed the work that had been completed so far, and we're exploring opportunities for improved student voice. And considering our future work, we're really looking to bring in a presenter that's going to talk about the power of words for our students and make our students truly understand the power their words have, whether in person or online. Our middle school held its chorus concert last week and band concerts this week, and high school concerts are coming up over, after the break. Our World Language Honor Society inductions took place. And then I'm going to give Jackie a quick opportunity to talk about some of the professional learning that's underway.
Thank you, Dr. Luft. Every month, we have professional learning hours with our colleagues. And the types of opportunities available to our colleagues range from speakers like Michael DeLeon, who also led one of our parent evenings that Dr. Luft had mentioned. He had a special session with teachers after school. Literacy support, so that we are implementing our new scholastic program at the elementary school with Fidelity. MYP unpacking as we prepare for our launch workshop on March 10th with IB. We are currently reviewing the different components of the International Baccalaureate Approach and specifically to the middle years program, including at the high school, the GP program as well. Our colleagues are continuing to do work there, whether it's identifying schedules for assessments or revising curriculum and collaborating on incorporating theory of knowledge into other content area classes. In addition, we have other opportunities to explore ENL practices, scenario-based learning, and opportunities like that so that our colleagues can continue to develop their professional learning. In addition to this, we also offer in-service opportunities, which are after-school workshops for teachers. And we've had several teachers take up opportunities to either learn with their colleagues or with me directly. I've held workshops, but colleagues through our teacher center have offered workshops here. As a matter of fact, Dr. Messera held a wonderful workshop on anxiety in the classroom, managing that for students, which is related to mental health. We're working with community partners to provide youth mental health first aid as an option, coming soon in the late winter and early spring. So we continue to provide as many opportunities as we can, both during the days like superintendent conference days, as well as after school for our colleagues to continue their learning.
Thank you very much. That's it.
Okay. So our presentations, we have a couple of presentations this evening. Our first presentation is going to be the risk assessment report done by our external Our new external auditor.
Thank you, Barbara.
Tip it up. You don't have to bend down. There you go.
How's that, okay?
There you go.
I do want to start by thanking Barbara and Guy and Tom for joining the audit committee and that commitment to the audit committee. We went over the risk assessment in detail in about 45-minute period. I will not bore everybody here with all that detail, however, I will hit on those highlights. Let me just quickly introduce myself because I am here for the first time. My name is Justin Wood. I am with New Jettin-Hausler PC, which is out of Montgomery, New York, which is in Orange County, New York, about 45 minutes away. I've been with the firm for 20 years. The firm's been in existence for 100 years, and I've been a partner at the firm for six years. I've been performing internal audits, risk assessments and internal audits at school districts since 2006, when the five-point plan first came out by the New York State Comptroller. And, you know, having said that, I do quickly just want to let everybody know like how we do assess the risks. There are two different types of risks that we take into account. One is the inherent risk in each area, and there's 19 different areas that we assess risk in. So the inherent risk, meaning the risks that kind of come with the territory, right? That aren't necessarily relevant to this specific district, but all districts as a whole are just risky in these specific areas. The other is control risk, which would be the areas in which the controls and procedures here at the district would potentially raise that risk. I'm very happy to announce that in none of the areas that we did assess high was it due to the control risk here at the district. It was due to the inherent risk of the, of those areas, right? And those four areas that are high are cash receipts and revenue recording, fixed assets and inventory controls, the extra classroom activity funds, and payroll and personnel, right? Now, after discussing all of those areas with the audit committee, I did make the recommendation for the first focus area to be on the payroll and personnel area. And I also just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Luft and Jill for the, for all of their hard work and along with their staff and all of the information they provided. And they were all a pleasure to work with, and, you know, everything went really well with the staff, provided all the information required in a very timely manner. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank them.
So would you give them the kind of like the timeline, like what, like what comes next?
Okay, so, right, so I was here in the middle of November, performing the risk assessment procedures. I then issued the report, you know, maybe December 1st, thereabouts. And actually, I'm just going to look quickly to see what the date is. So November 28th was the date of the report. And then from there, gave the audit committee some time to read it and digest it. And then we scheduled the meeting for last week. Unfortunately, it got canceled due to weather. And then at this point in time, the board will select an area. And, and my recommendation is not, you know, written in stone. The board by no means needs to take that recommendation, you know? It's ultimately your decision. And then from there, I will supply Jill with a list of information that we will need. We'll schedule some dates roughly three to four weeks from now. I'll come in for a couple of days with a few staff members, focus in on that specific area, follow up in a couple of weeks with a draft report, follow up then with a final report and board presentation from there.
Good. Any other questions?
No, no, it sounds good.
Thank you.
Do we have any idea what areas the audit committee may choose to investigate?
Yeah, he's going to investigate what.
The recommendation is payroll and personnel.
Payroll and personnel.
Both those. And as you said, okay.
Because that will give him kind of like an overview of what's going on in the district. It's the largest thing to, you know, look at.
Where the money flows, right?
Where it is.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Justin.
And happy holidays.
Thank you very much.
You too.
Do you want to ask?
Does the chairman have anything to say? You want to add anything there, Mr. Chairman of the Board?
We accept the recommendation. We're on the payroll and personnel.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead. The second report is.
So our second report this evening will be our special education presentation. So I'd like to invite up Dr. Natalie Doherty and Mrs. Melissa Estrella.
I'm Natalie Doherty. I'm here with my colleague, Melissa Estrella. Tonight, we're just going to talk to you a little bit about the special education services that we have in the district. I'm going to go through the continuation of, continuum of services. We'll start off with our related services, and we have a full array K-12 of occupational therapy services, physical therapy services, counseling services, speech and language support. And again, this is K-12. Some of our services are push-in, pull-out. I'll get into that a little bit later. Some of our classroom designs. We have integrated co-teaching in grades kindergarten all the way through grades, grade 12. We also offer an array of smaller specialized classes. Some of them range from no more than 15 students to one teacher. Some of our classes with students with more significant disabilities are placed in smaller classes of a maximum of eight students, one teacher, one assistant. Some of our students often require one-to-one teaching assistance if they have elopement plans, if they require hand-over-hand assistance throughout their school day. So our special education teachers, they do a lot more than just teaching in front of a classroom. Obviously, they, they teach and they work directly with students, but besides working and teaching, they conduct educational evaluations. So when a student is referred for an evaluation, any kind of an evaluation, they conduct that educational evaluation, they write the report, they develop goals for a student, they work and manage their entire IEP. They create their goals, they do all their data collection for all of their student goals. So even the educational evaluations, that's really where you start to develop the IEP. So you take their strengths and their weaknesses, and really you develop their IEPs, and then you create their goals. And those goals are what we do to see about students' progress throughout a school year. So if a special education teacher has, let's say, I'll just do an even number of, you know, 10 per caseload. So if a student has educational goals, say, each student of theirs on their caseload has three to six educational goals, they are responsible for collecting the data on each one of those goals, reporting out and making sure that they're progressing. And if they're not progressing, what can we do differently? So, so there's a lot of work that goes into creating IEPs, to managing goals. So, so that's a really big part of the job that isn't always seen. But, but it is a, it is a big, probably the biggest part of the job is behind the scenes is that IEP and creating the goals and managing those goals. They also attend all of the CSE meetings for the students on their caseload. Very often, not only the students on their caseload, but the children that they see on a day-to-day basis, they'll attend those meetings. And then parent communication. Each case manager is responsible for continuously reaching out to parents and managing any concerns, managing progress monitoring with those parents, and changing goals or any services. So again, teaching, their, their actual teaching in the classroom is one part of a special education teacher's job. And they often, what's called specially designed instruction in the classroom. So what that looks like is really very different depending on the student population that is in front of them. But each individual child has an individual plan that sort of guides us through the year. So this is just some pictures of an 811 classroom. And an 811 classroom is really, you're going to see really individualized instruction. And if you see those bins up there, those color-coded bins, each child will go through their bins. So their bins could have, you know, multiple different activities in those bins, and when they're finished, they move on to the next one. They often have breaks in there. They need a lot of support. Often, you'll see a teaching assistant on the other side of the table working with them. So you can see it's really a highly specialized classroom, and a lot of sensory you'll see in the next picture. Some of the, I don't know if you could see it really well, but there's swings in the classroom often for students that have a lot of sensory needs, different activities. Whoops, sorry about that. Just to make sure that we're, we're managing their, their physical needs as well as their academic needs. Hold on, here we go. So speech services, again, I talked a little bit about that we offer these services. They, our speech teachers, we have three and a half, 3.5. One person is part-time, obviously. So we have K through 12, three and a half people to service our district. They work in collaboration with all the teachers, all of the students' teachers. They work with parents constantly developing individual assignments for each student. So say if they have a caseload of 20 or 30 students on their caseload, and their student has 20 or 30 goals, they're collecting and implementing lessons for each one of those goals to make sure that they're meeting those needs. So that was, that's for the special education students. They also see general education students. So we service students that have, usually if you're a general education student receiving speech and language services, you're receiving like articulation therapy. So you might have some sounds that need some work, and they're usually monitored and progress. And they're usually moved out of speech services fairly quickly on a timeline. And then with language services, again, pragmatic language services will be in some small groups for general education students, helping them, you know, understand sort of the rules of language and how to interact with others and using language more effectively. And I don't think I can play this, apparently. I didn't, I'm not sure what happened. But I will talk to you about the video that we were going to show. So we use technology very often now with our students that have multiple disabilities. And we use a program called Touch Chat, and it's on an iPad. And they're usually in a case that is really well protected so that the iPad, you know, if it's dropped or anything like that, it doesn't, you know, get damaged. But Touch Chat allows our students with multiple disabilities, very often, for years, you would hear, you would hear people say, God, they're so smart, you know, there's so much in there, they just can't express it. And through Touch Chat, really, it is quite fascinating to watch a student use a device so effectively to show us what they know. And it cuts down on behaviors, it cuts down on their, their, just their general frustration with not being able to tell their mother or their father that they don't feel well or that they want something in particular. And if you ever saw a student be able to use one of these devices to show all of what they know or to have their needs met, it really is a game changer for parents and for their teachers and for themselves. I'll give you another example. Our PTA was incredibly kind. They had the Winter Wonderland event for, for everybody. And Amanda saw that, that some of our students were really struggling to participate in that event because it was so big and loud. So she hosted a smaller event just for our students with more significant disabilities and their families last Friday. And she decorated, the PTA decorated the gym at the elementary school. And one of our students who uses Touch Chat went into that class, into the, to the gym and looked around, and he is nonverbal, this student of ours, and looked around and typed out the word beautiful on his Touch Chat. And this is a very young little boy who can spell the word beautiful, number one. Number two, but just like, he was truly in awe of what he saw around him, and we would not have been able to know that if he didn't have that device. So hopefully, I can show you another time, a snippet of a student using this Touch Chat, but it really does change the lives of, of our students and their families. So now I'm going to turn this over to Melissa Estrella for the next portion.
As part of our related services, we also offer occupational and physical therapy. In grades K through 12, we have one physical therapist who works in our district. We also have two occupational therapists. Occupational therapy definitely works on handwriting skills throughout the day. However, really, we have to take a wider look at occupational therapy, which is an array of services, from fine motor to visual motor integration, as well as psychosocial functioning. Their activities really emphasize independent living skills as well as full participation within school. Our physical therapists emphasize more of the physical gross motor approach to increase independence, so that independence might be in the classroom or it might be in our So some highlights on occupational therapy and physical therapy. Both domains work with general education students as a tiered service, so tier one, tier two, through RTI. They also go from that level of service all the way to supporting a student with safely navigating the building, from going upstairs, going downstairs, accessing the restroom in an appropriate way, to using, to using pencils and scissors in the classroom. Now, if we look at special education, our OTs and PTs conduct all evaluations, whether it be an initial referral or a reevaluation, which students receive every three years when classified. They create the individualized education program goals. They monitor those goals through collecting data that they conduct through either individual or group sessions. They also collaborate with the staff. So going in, taking a look at the environment, how to help the environment so that the student can use the environment in an easier fashion to access their academics, along with providing accommodations. You'll even see an OT or a PT go into a room and quickly fix something and arrange it in a different manner so that the child can use it more functionally. They also are an intricate part in utilizing assistive technology. So that can be low-tech to just a pencil support, to just like what Natalie was speaking about with the Touch Chat. So here are some OT and PT at work, right? So if we take a look, we have, we have our creations, our artwork here. But what goes into that is not only the visual piece, the fine motor piece, and, and most importantly, decoration piece, just the overall creativity of our children. You have handwriting, you're taking a look at a student that's using a spatula to, to effectively get all of the, I think it's pudding, out of the pan. We also have a student that's learning to button, right? And so buttoning, you know, we, it happens every day, but this is something that our students really may benefit from learning. And then we have really fun activities where students are having fun, and little known to them, they're also increasing their strength in their hands, their core strength, as well as just all over jumping and hopping, but these are things that we have to have in life. Now let's take a look at school psychologists, also a related service. K through 12, we have five psychologists. So at the general education level, and this is also a tiered support, they host social skills groups. Some are at the lunch bunches, so that's during lunchtime, once a week typically, for students, to just work on friendships, pragmatic language. They also have individual check-ins for students that might require just social emotional support during a limited time. And then we also have participation and creation of 504 plans, and they run all 504 annual meetings. In the area of special education. In the area of special education, they conduct all psychological evaluations. Again, all initials, all reevaluations. Through the goals that they have created on the individualized education program, this is what actually drives their lesson planning. So that they can collect the appropriate data to support the child in accessing their academics, as well as their social emotional arena, if you will. They conduct all annual reviews as CSC subcommittee chairperson. So on their caseload, all students that are in their caseload, they also hold their annual reviews. As we move forward, we're really focusing on professional development related to social emotional learning, as well as incorporating outside agencies. So just recently, we had OPWDD come in to provide us with, it's a very in-depth process. And we wanted to refresh ourselves on how to effectively support parents through this process. So we were able to get key, key players, if you will, in the county to reach out to and direct our parents to go to them. Because the state has, they're kind of taking away our reins of being able to submit paperwork for parents. We were very active in helping them, but they're really placing that on the parents. But now we have really good numbers and contacts to support parents through that process. We're also gathering additional resources for families within our district. So any Putnam County, and even Westchester County, if that sort of folds into Putnam County, any resources that we can provide to parents. So we have a number of specialized programs within Putnam Valley. One of our cohorts of students is in our high school. And we are working on transition planning. This is an intricate part of our older students and their IEPs. So our students recently had their grand opening of the Putnam Valley Diner. And many individuals here may have partaked, anything from a breakfast, breakfast sandwich, if I could speak, and pancakes. So what the students have really been working on is career building. So these are the initial skills that we need in order to hold a career as we move forward. So we've been supporting our students with identifying skills that they're really good at and also focusing on areas to learn. We're really hoping that through this Putnam Valley Diner, that students are able to hone in on perhaps careers that they might like. We're also active in the community. We're going to the grocery store, they're managing their budget, they're also managing inventory. And most importantly, they're working on communication skills, which is ever so important. So here are some really great pictures. So you see Mr. Glenn there, who's, who's heading this with Karen Cruzy and a number of support staff in the high school. They've created a nice diner atmosphere. We have a full kitchen. You also see the washer and dryer. It's, it's more like an apartment, if you will. Coffee, there's tables, you have a server that comes around and, and offers you coffee and, and other things that, that you might like for breakfast. It's a great experience for them. They've also gone into the community to explore BOSIs and their various programs as well. So we also have specialized programs that are outside of our district. Currently, we have twenty five students that are receiving services outside, from local BOSIs programs to neighboring school districts, as well as state approved non-public schools. We are in constant communication with the families, the schools and the students as they age, to make sure that their goals are being met and that they are, they are happily attending the school that, that they're placed in. So areas of focus for, for special education, we're taking a look at specialized instruction training. So multisensory reading certifications, verbal behavior milestones. So it's called VB mapping, and that's really in our specialized programs. It drives our IEP goals while collecting data to determine areas of growth of students. We have our teach method that we're also taking a look at learning programs there for our teachers. Communication devices that Natalie was speaking about is constantly being revamped. And we have to stay on top of the technology. So that's something that we receive training in constantly, as well as goal setting and progress monitoring. There's always, there's always something new to learn. And we're trying to stay on top of that as, you know, every year.
So I'm just going to wrap this up a little bit with some of the enhancements that we are trying to look at this year and probably into next year as well. Our co-teaching strategies, our co-teaching model is really in a general education class. There's six models of co-teaching. So we really try and understand how to improve those models, when to use those models, and what those models look like within our grade, grade spans and throughout our district. Our life skills program is really K-12 and really looking at supporting students and their families on both, you know, as, as they enter our school as kindergartners, all the way up through the time they leave. And, and those students often stay until they're twenty one. And what does that look like for them and their families? A continued focus on transition planning, really helping students to create good transition plans that are realistic for them and for their families. That part of planning starts to happen at around twelve years old and then gets, becomes more intense as they get closer to leaving us. And depending on when they're leaving us, that plan will develop and unfold as we get closer to their, to their graduation. And then inviting county organizations, again, we're working with OPWDD, which is the Office of Persons with Developmental Disabilities. And then we're working with CAP, which is our Community Resource Center, and just a bunch of local agencies on providing resources to our students and their families. So do you have any questions? It's a lot.
It is a lot. And I'm, I'm happy to see that, you know, that we provide so many services to the students who need them. I'm especially always happy to hear that, that it goes beyond the classroom, that you reach out to the parents, that you reach out to the families, that, that you're including them in the, the strategies that you're using so that they can use those same strategies at home. You know, all of that is just, I think it's, it's powerful and it is why our students are doing well. So thank you both.
Thank you.
I do want to acknowledge that in order for all these things to be possible, it takes the work of some of the most dedicated, passionate and caring staff members we have in our district. And that the teachers, the teacher aides and teaching assistants that support these programs are true heroes in our community for what they do for our students. And we talk about individualized plans for these students. In many of these classes, we're talking about individualized plans, right? What one student is doing may be totally different than the student sitting next to them. And we're not just talking about academic work, how we support them socially, how we support them emotionally, how we, how we help them regulate their behaviors, right? All of those things go into that individualized plan, which is then multiplied up to twelve times every single day. And having the opportunity to visit some of these classrooms and speak with these teachers, many of which are the first ones in in the morning and the last ones to leave, many of which are here on weekends and nights and working with parents in evenings. And just, it's a tremendous amount of work. And it really takes a special person. And we're lucky to have many of them here in Putnam Valley, which is why in many ways we serve as a model for these programs for other districts in our region who come in and see what we do or tuition their students into our programs to have an experience that they're not otherwise able to offer the students in that same type of setting. So I did want to take a minute to acknowledge them. And obviously, there takes a tremendous amount of leadership that goes into making that all possible. And I want to thank Dr. Doherty and Melissa Australia for providing that leadership over this program and really providing educational opportunities for all these students to meet their needs. So thank you both very much.
Thank you.
If I can, Natalie or?
Of course.
Melissa?
Melissa?
Melissa, what would be the percentage of students that are classified that are in the inclusion, inclusive program, immersive program within the regular academic course?
I can answer that. So approximately thirteen, thirteen point one percent of our population is classified as a student with a disability. And then out of that, I don't want to quote the exact number. But I, what I can do, you're talking about included in the general population?
Yes.
In co-teaching classes. So that number I'm not as confident in reporting out on, but I can certainly get that answer to you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much. All right. Our next presentation this evening will be our athletics, physical education and health presentations. I'd like to invite up Mr. David Cantrowitz. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So to start off, because we could talk for hours about athletics and PE and health and all the things that go on, I just want to do a brief summary of all the things that are taking place curriculum wise within the district. For starters, in 2020, New York State released a new set of learning standards for physical education. Currently, we're under phase two, which is building capacity. Myself and the K-12 PE teachers have been reviewing our curriculum and realigning our activities and all of the work we do with our students to these new standards. And in many cases, changing and altering the activities and plans that we have to fit the new standards that have been created. Some of the new electives that you'll find across the district at the high school level is a strength and conditioning class, where students are learning functional movement patterns and explore various types of exercise programming. You know, really just a way to teach that lifelong fitness, give the kids the skills and knowledge they need to work out on their own outside of the district, whether it's at the gym or whether they just want to, you know, get better at their sport, develop more physical, physicality and muscularity during the school day. This is an example of one of our weight room lesson plans that our teachers are using that's been updated to reflect the current standards. It discusses what the students are able to complete as far as each workout is concerned, working cooperatively with other students and spotters, identifying the muscles being used at each station, and developing the cardiovascular and muscular endurance, muscular strength, contraction needed to complete the exercise successfully. As we move down to the middle school, our curriculum switches gears from this very content heavy, content based physical education program at the high school to what's called the sport education model, which is used to provide student centered instruction. And students are responsible for all the leadership, the instruction and participation through a variety of rotating teams and jobs that they'll have for each activity or sport that they play. We have team captains who lead their group of students in activities and skill specific drills, stats keepers who learn how to record and report statistics for each game, managers who learn the role of distributing the equipment, setting up the field or court for whatever activity they're playing, referees who are in charge of enforcing the rules, obviously the player who's a participant in the game, and then scorekeepers who keep track of each individual game and score as it's played. So at this model, we try to immerse the students in that group and team atmosphere where everybody in each activity has a specific role. And as we go from unit to unit, from activity to activity, those roles rotate. So everybody has the opportunity to learn each of those skills. At the elementary school, we've done a lot of cross-curricular instruction. The pictures that you see now are from Halloween time, where we started to focus more on anatomy and physiology. So we took the Halloween theme of skeletons and used it as an opportunity to teach the students about the bones in the body, the functions of the muscle and the way that the muscles move the bones during the activities that they're doing. Also at the elementary school, we just recently had our gym show, where our students showed off all of their tremendous abilities and capabilities. You know, what you're seeing right now is just a few examples of a really tremendous, tremendous performance. I was lucky to see it twice and just super impressed with the planning that all of our teachers and all of the elementary school staff put into it. But even more so, you know, the ability and the talent that our kids really have. Transitioning over to health education, our goal this year has been to provide students with a deeper understanding of the health triangle and really to understand the overarching effects that mental health has on their health triangle. The health triangle consists of physical, emotional and social health. And, you know, since the pandemic, since there were lockdowns, that lack of socialization that kids had from being online rather than being with each other, mental health has become a hot topic issue, not just here in Putnam Valley, but at the state level. So we've been finding ways to infuse that into our curriculum and make it more prominent in the instruction that we're providing. The New York State Education, excuse me, the New York State Education Department has actually released framework specifically tied to mental health education and literacy in school. I know it's a little small to see on the screen, but it really just provides different checkpoints and benchmarks that students should reach grade by grade, K through twelve, in areas such as where to ask and for help for yourself and for others, how to ask, how to follow a decision-making protocol, ways to express your feeling to peers and, you know, and assess your own levels of stress, u-stress and distress in your body. It's really a comprehensive guide on all of the things that students should learn as they develop K through twelve in terms of mental health. So one of the great units I got to see this year was at the high school, we used something called the car metaphor to understand stress. The body's stress response, you know, you sit down in a room of ninth and 10th grade students and you start talking about the parasympathetic and the autonomic nervous system, and you've lost them in two seconds. Using the car metaphor, we take a look at the image that was shown and ask them to assess this in terms of stress on the body. So what do they see? They see a car that's redlining, going ninety nine miles an hour and is low on gas. If you take that in terms of your body, you know, somebody's really rushing, they're going as hard as they can. They might have little rest, little food, and their body's under an extreme amount of stress. So we use this kind of as our check engine activity, where students can assess their own well-being, their own engine, and make changes to their life based on what they need. We could tell this person right now that, you know, maybe they should slow down a little bit, take their foot off the gas, step back, relax, maybe rest, refuel, and just taking very complex bodily functions and breaking them down into something that all of our students can relate to. At the middle school, we do it on an even, you know, grander level. We break it down letter by letter. This is the help decision-making framework. The basic points of this are to help our students make healthy decisions for them and for their friends. H stands for healthy, is the decision you're about to make healthy. E is the decision that you're about to make ethical. L is the decision you're about to make legal. And P, would my parents or caregivers approve of the decision? This is just a very basic framework, but it helps put that order of thinking into their minds when, and hopefully lead to better decision-making and better outcomes in the future. So I know that was a lot of curriculum, so we're going to try to breeze through athletics pretty quickly. We've just started our winter season. We've had a great winter so far. Our girls' basketball team just won their game tonight against Lakeland. But going back to the fall, our focus has been on celebrating our athletes. We've set up a wall of fame going down the athletic wing. We've reorganized all of our athletic awards containers to really highlight the success and the great history that we've had. Coming up this year in June, we're going to have our first ever varsity athletic award ceremony and Hall of Fame induction ceremony. If you haven't seen it already, on my Twitter, on our school's website page under athletics, there's the Hall of Fame nomination form. We're inviting all nominees through April first, and that'll occur on June 12th as we get closer towards the end of the year. The fall, we were pretty consistent year to year. Overall, we did have more registrations than we did last year, from seven to twelve, middle school and high school. This is just a quick, brief summary of our high school registrations. Overall, there was four less high school registrations than there were last year. Our biggest growth was in football and soccer. And our biggest decline that we noticed was in cross-country. But like I said, overall, year over year, we were still ahead. At the modified level, we had one of our biggest increases in field hockey. We had over fourteen new registrations for field hockey. Our counterpart to that was we had eight less registrations in girls' soccer. That's due to a number of factors, such as, you know, youth soccer opportunities in Putnam Valley versus field hockey. And our mod, our varsity field hockey teacher is also our middle school PE teacher. So she runs a before-school field hockey clinic, which has led many of our girls to gravitate towards field hockey. We had a fall media day for all of our teams. So you can see on the screen just pictures of all of our varsity teams from this fall. We had some of our senior night celebrations for each of our varsity teams, celebrating the accomplishments of all of our 12th grade students. We had one of our special events, which we're hoping is going to become, you know, an annual tradition, our first responder day at one of our football games, where we had a special on-field tribute before the game to recognize all of the first responders in Putnam Valley. It was a great, it was a great, great event. Unfortunately, there was a fire call during the event. So many, many of our first responders had to leave abruptly, but it was a great opportunity to celebrate them and recognize them for the community. Our fall all-league awards, we had thirty two athletes earn all-league honors this year. I won't read through all of them, but cross-country had nine, cheerleading had two, football had four. I won't read through all of them, but cross-country had nine, cheerleading had two, football had four, field hockey had seven, boys' soccer had one, girls' soccer had two, girls' swim had two, and volleyball had five. So each one of our teams had at least one representative at the all-league level. Our cheerleading team won its first game day cheer section championship, beating out North Rockland for the regional title. We also took the regional bronze medal. Our volleyball team were the Section One runner-ups. We were the league champions, and we had two big milestones for some of our athletes. Gabby Rodriguez recorded her 1,000th career assist, and Alyssiana Rukaj became the first all-state volleyball player in Putnam Valley history. So we're very excited for them. Our field hockey team was the Section One runner-up. They capped off a great season, unfortunately, you know, losing in the finals to Bronxville, but they had an absolutely amazing season and were returning almost everybody on the team. And last but not least, we are cross-country runners. We hosted the first league championships here at Putnam Valley since the wellness trail has been utilized. Our individual champion was Michael Fitzmorris and Gabby Randazzo representing the girls. And overall, in Section One, our boys took sixth place. Also in the fall, our Putnam Valley Superstore raised over $1,000 for our fall teams. Last year, school year-wide, we raised over $4,000 for the athletic program. And all of those funds go directly to our student athletes via the Booster Club for whatever they may need, whether it's team dinners, extra equipment, specialized equipment for students. Every dollar of that goes back to them. For the winter, very briefly, again, year over year, we're about the same. We're a little bit ahead than we were last year. Our biggest growth in registrations was in wrestling and cheerleading. The, on the flip side of that, our lowest registration was boys' basketball with a decline of six. But overall, like I said, year over year, we are increasing our participation in athletics. At the middle school, boys' basketball saw the biggest growth with 11. Girls' basketball and wrestling both had three less registrations than they had the year prior, but overall, we were up in our total number of registrations. And again, this doesn't, this doesn't necessarily represent how many people are on the team, but this is how many people registered for each sport. These are some of the pictures from our winter media day, which just happened a few weeks ago. And we had some new opportunities this winter. We joined a merger with the Westchester side of Section One for girls' ice hockey, where we have a player on the team currently. And we also have a three-girl contingent of our women's wrestling team who have been getting out there and being, you know, the pioneers of women's wrestling now that it is an emerging sport in the state of New York. They are piloting teams across the section, so we are definitely getting involved with that. And just taking a brief look ahead at the spring, we surveyed our sixth through 11th graders to see what sports they would be interested in, especially with the emergence of girls' flag football at the state level. What we saw is that the biggest population of our student athletes are interested in lacrosse and softball. And flag football would be a second choice if one of those, you know, weren't necessarily available, which both of them are. So at this time, we're not quite ready to make the step into bringing flag football into Putnam Valley because we have such high interest in the sports that we already have. And with that said, I hope to see everybody at the game tomorrow. We have a wrestling match at 4:30. Wednesday, we have a girls' basketball game at 4:30, and then we finish up the week before break Friday with the boys' basketball team playing Hen Hut at 5 o'clock. If anybody has any questions, happy to answer.
David, I love that display downstairs, and it's about time. All the monuments and things and the awards, they were piled on each other when I was here as AP. And to see them lined up so nicely in those display cases, really, that, that wowed me. First time I saw that, and it really is terrific. And I, sports, I understand that the pull of sports changes as years go by. The biggest sport that we seem to sponsor now seems to be the lacrosse, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, and soccer. Is, is that right?
So lacrosse is definitely one of our most popular sports. Soccer, not so much. I would say we're really moving in the direction of field hockey, especially at the girls' level.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Field hockey is immensely popular. You know, we almost doubled our registrations year over year in field hockey, and that kind of came at the expense of soccer, just because of how much exposure our kids are getting. But to kind of combat that and make sure that kids have an opportunity in soccer, we've partnered with Parks and Rec to do a Saturday soccer clinic for kids in grades three through eight to try to bring that youth level back to Putnam Valley.
Good, good. Thank you.
I would just like to thank you for getting girls involved in wrestling because when my daughter was here, we had to get permission from the state, and everybody tried to talk her out of it, along with a friend, and it just became such a bureaucratic nightmare.
Yeah, we're going to make it happen. Before, before I came here to Putnam Valley, I actually coached girls' wrestling. So it is a, it's a passion of mine, and the girls that we have are doing a great job. They're really into it, and they're competitors. It's great. It's great to see.
Thank you.
I think that you're, the athletic trainers, teachers, coaches have a really tricky job because you want to encourage students to win and to do their best, but you're balancing that social and emotional piece, which says that not every, you're not going to win all the time. And, and how do you handle that? And, and how do you deal with not being the best? And I think, I think it's a, can be a tricky road to walk, and I think your staff does amazing work. I also saw the elementary gym show, and just the encouragement of the teachers and the rest of the students. I mean, just, it was really, you could tell that it was, the focus was on students doing their best, not students being perfect. And that's, that's really huge, so.
Absolutely, and, you know, our coaches, we've met, and we always talk about, you know, refocusing the why we're here. Why are we coaching? Why are we leading? And the goal is always to win. We always want to win. We want to win every game that we step out there to do. But, but the purpose, the why, is to have maximum human development of the kids that, that we're able to reach. The kids that are there should leave our sport being a better person, being a better version of themselves, and having that confidence in them to take the next step in whatever it is. And I think our coaches are doing a really great job.
And, you know, I know how hard that is for coaches because that, you know, and that's changed over the years, you know. And coaches have become more aware of not putting that kind of stress on young students, but encouraging them to do their best and to think about the why, so I appreciate that.
How many years you been here for now?
I have shoes older than he is.
So for anyone who's involved in any level of sports or athletics, I think you can recognize what the life of an AD must be like. You're dealing with tremendous personalities and emotions and, and all of the stuff that goes along with sports. And I do want to compliment that not only have you done a fantastic job in that part of the position, but on top of that, we started a sports Hall of Fame, we created a new display. We have media days, we have senior events, we have superstores, we have alumni games. We have tons of ways in which we recognize these students, provide opportunities for them. And I think that all goes to your credit in being able to do all of those things, along with supervising the health and the nurses and the physical education department. So I know there's long hours, and I know there's lots of, lots of, lots of meetings and emails, and you don't get a second free when you're on the sidelines. But I think your approachability and all of, all that you've been able to accomplish in such a short period of time goes a long way towards the success of our program. So I do want to recognize you for that. I do want to take a moment to recognize Megan as well. She's our athletic trainer slash equipment manager slash assistant athletic director slash, that's not really her title, slash whatever needs to be done. Megan is there, able and willing to do it. She's been a tremendous resource for the district for many years. We stole her from a private agency and were able to hire her under an individual contract to bring her on board. But her and Dave really work seamlessly together to make sure that everything that needs to get done gets done for the betterment of our students, so thank you both.
Thank you.
David, way back when, we had a turnover of APs, athletic, you know, your position, ADs, athletic directors. And I was put in that position for eight weeks. It was the worst eight weeks of my life. Now, I mean that sincerely. The calls from your parents of, of team members and the coaches, and I don't know how you do it, but you're doing a great job, and it's, it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, our last presentation is on the multi-year.
I have one, so I want to just answer Sam's question, if it's okay with you to take a moment. So New York State takes a snapshot of data in October of every year. So this data is based on 2001 data. And out of 207 classified students, 119 of those students were in general education for 80% or more of their day.
Excellent.
67 students were included anywhere between 40 and 79% of the day. So that is, most of our students are participating in general education. And really, what we've done, you know, as Ms. Stria could explain, is like we don't, so if you have a disability in reading, we won't put you in all smaller classes. We'll put you, if you need really a specialized class, we'll put you just for ELA, or we'll put you in just for math. So really, we're able to design our programs to meet our student needs, not, not designing our programs to, you know, back, we're, we're trying to meet our student needs individually. And that takes a lot of work, and especially doing that, you know, in an economically sound way. So, so you can see by the data that we really have almost all of our students, even our students with the most significant disabilities, including our general education programs.
Thank you. Thank you, Natalie. Thank you.
Okay, so multi-year financial planning.
Thank you. So I will quickly begin, and then I'll turn it over to the real star of the show here, Jill. But tonight marks our sort of kickoff of the budget development process for the 23, 24, sorry to even remember to say that, 23, 24 school year. So this process will begin this evening and will continue up until our budget vote in May and our, hopefully, our budget adoption, final budget adoption in April. So the first thing that we're going to do is talk a little bit about the timeline. Oops, not that one. Broke it, Dan. There you go. So our budget development timeline. So this evening is really initial sort of 30,000-foot picture as to what, what we're considering, what some of our priorities are, what some of our constraints are, and really sort of lay the groundwork for what ultimately will become our adopted budget, hopefully on April 13th. So over the next several meetings, what we'll do is we'll start to get more and more in-depth. We're changing how we've done it in the past. We would not be asking individual buildings to present budgets, but instead, we'll be doing a broader instructional budget presentation. So that'll be facilitated by Ms. Levine, but our building principals will be here to support and answer any questions. So that'll give a more whole picture of our instructional program. We'll talk about staffing and class sizes and all that other good stuff in there, but focusing on the entirety of the instructional program. Our next presentations will be athletics and technology, then facilities and special education. And then the first time we'll share our full budget will be on March 2nd. March 16th is sort of an open date for continued budget discussions and gives us some flexibility if there's things we need to go back and look at. And then ultimately, we'll be asking the board to adopt our budget on April 13th, which leaves us in line to get a notification before the actual budget vote in May. So in order to build a budget, it's very much a balancing act of several different conditions. So first is organizationally, right? What we have, what our mission, our goals, our core values are, what we really want from our students, what our instructional program looks like, what we know works, what we want the culture of our district to be, the experiences of our students, finding opportunities for leadership. So that's sort of organizationally part of the balancing act. Another piece of it is there's obviously fiscal constraints at play. State aid is what the state says it is, tax cap is what the calculation says it is. We have contractual obligations that we have to pay. Obviously, there's district policies, there's state mandates, and all of those come down in the form of fiscal constraints that have to be balanced along with what we believe is right for our organization. And then we have environmental factors, things that are entirely out of our control. Inflation and the cost of vendor contracts, what's going on in the local housing market, assessed values, houses, families moving in, families moving out, how that impacts our enrollment, the needs of our students. Do students require specialized programs? If a student moves in with a, at a district placement, that student continues at our district placement, but it comes at this time out of our budget, right? So there's lots of factors. And ultimately, the work that we do collectively, Jill, myself, our administrative colleagues, and certainly the members of the board, is to try to find a balance between these three areas. One that we know supports students, one we know that recognizes the financial constraints of our community, and one that recognizes all of the environmental factors that are at play. So if we're successful in doing that, we've done a good job. Some of the priority areas that we identified that I'm going to allow Ms. Figaro to speak about afterwards is our instructional program, which obviously includes the program itself, but our staffing and the benefits associated with the personnel, facilities, operations and non-instructional contracts, our revenues, what happens with our tax levy and our foundation aid, state mandates, which continue to flow into districts and oftentimes come at a price, whether it be financial or resource-driven. Inflation and vendor costs, where there's been a lot of talk in the news about the rise of inflation and inflationary numbers of 9%, 10%. And obviously, there's an unknown impact on what that'll have on our vendor contracts. But going back to the other side of the equation, we can, the state caps our allowable tax levy at 2%. So the fact that inflation is 8% or 9% doesn't help us because we're capped at 2% regarding CPI. And then obviously, ultimately, what we need is community support in order to approve our budget and allow us to sustain the programs that we currently have in place. So that is a broad picture of the budget forecast priorities. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Figaro, who's going to talk a little more detail about each of these.
Thank you. So, yep, we're going to touch on each one of these topics a little bit as we start to build the budget. Obviously, we're nowhere near, we're just about started, let's just say. We've met with some of the departments and yet to meet with more. So, and before the break, we hope to meet with all of them and then start to build the budget in January. So our, you know, our priorities, as Dr. Luft mentioned, instructional program, right? Our instructional program makes up about 75% of our budget. The salaries associated with that budget, with the instructional piece, is about 50% of that 75%. So right now, our salaries are under contract negotiations with the teachers. We're in an area that's called mediation right now, where the district is trying to settle terms with the teachers. So we hope to have that done very shortly and hopefully, at least before the end of the year. I'm hoping before we build the budget so that things become a little bit more transparent to me as to where we stand for salaries. The professional development piece of that, I think Jackie Levine touched on that. Right now, we're working on, you know, the elementary level of our ELA program that we just brought in, the scholastic program for all grades, sorry, K through, K through four. And then we have our middle years program that will be working on professional development with that. And the high school's still continuing their IB program. And obviously, there's all other areas of professional development as well. We work with our monitor, any, any area that we need to work on where there's learning to be done for our staff, our, you know, our instructional leaders. So that is a big part of our planning in the budget. The health benefits and other fringe benefits that are associated with the salaries that I mentioned, they're all affected based on where we land with the salaries, right? So we have our fringe taxes, payroll taxes. Those are affected by where the salaries land, right? So if our salaries go up a certain percent, so do the. So if our salaries go up a certain percent, so do the fringe benefits. They are about 30% of the salaries, what I would consider the cost involved in that. So for our instructional part of the budget, we, it's about $6.3 million where our salaries in the instructional part of the budget are about $21 million. Just to give you an idea of the dollars, our whole budget is about $55 million. So, you know, half of our budget goes towards those salaries and benefits and pension costs. Our pension costs are going up for the instructional part of our budget, about a half a percent, but it's a half a percent on all of those salaries that we pay out for instructional staff. So then we move on to the facilities, operations, and other non-instructional costs. They make up about the other 25% of our budget. So we have salaries there and fringe as well. Those contracts are being negotiated for the non-instructional staff right now. That contract is not expiring until the end of this fiscal year. So we are in negotiations with them right now. We've already started. It's, it's an ongoing process. It will more than likely be resolved before the end of the school year, as it should be. Hopefully, I'll have a better idea, of course, again, with salaries before we build the budget. Not really sure where we are with that, but we're getting there. Obviously, the maintenance contracts will be affected by the inflation factor. Our capital projects are going to be affected by inflation. We have supply chain issues when we're planning capital projects, like escalation of costs and all that goes along with planning capital projects. I think Mr. Spittle talked a little bit in his presentation last meeting about our long-range facilities planning and what he's thinking and what we've been discussing with our architects and our five-year plan and all of the infrastructure needs that the district has. And then to put all those things together and afford them, we need to figure out where the revenue is coming from. So this year is the third year of three years where our foundation aid is being restored. So we've had year one and year two. This will be the final year. As far as future years go, I have a little bit of concern, and I think we've had discussions about this. I think NISBA's probably been discussing these things too, about the restoration of foundation aid. For years, there was a formula developed and they never really made good on their promises from the state to give that aid to the districts. So now that it's coming in, we don't know in future years where we'll be with that. Will it continue on the same level or will they reduce it now that they've made up some of the money that we haven't gotten in the past? So we're a little bit unclear on that factor, but we know that this year, they're going to, they're going to, supposed to be, giving us the final, the final payment on that foundation aid. And then our other state aid, so the estimates are not out yet, they'll be out in January, so we don't have any idea of where they will be. We think we know where they will be, but of course, it's always interesting, sometimes they come up with new formulas, new ideas, new reasons not to give what they're supposed to, or reasons to give more than what we had hoped for. So it's really unknown until then. We have grant funds that come in. We've had some stimulus funds that have been helping us fund our budget and obviously make up for some learning loss that's gone on through the pandemic. So those grant funds have helped us out immensely. We've been able to hire some additional folks and hopefully, we'll be able to keep some of those folks on after this is over. We've already spoken about that. We'll have to see where that, you know, where that ends up at the end of the two years. I believe the funding ends in September of 2024. We have the tuition, so yes, our superintendent and our garrison superintendent and look, neighboring district there is providing some students to us, to our, to our advantage, actually, for revenue's sake. I mean, that will bring in some additional revenue to the district, which is always a plus. And the students are thrilled to come here. Apparently, you know, they came, they viewed the programs that we, that we have and the buildings, and they were very impressed by our school. So we have six students so far that have committed to coming here next year. That would be at the high school level only. And then we have the allowable tax levy. And I put that at the bottom because we did have it at the top, but technically speaking, our revenues have to be all accounted for before we come to the tax levy, and I want to make sure that's clear. We never come up with the tax levy first and then decide what else do we have to supplement that. It's always the last piece because we don't want to put the burden of the expense on the taxpayer. We want to, we want that to be the last factor that's calculated before we figure out how to make those ends meet. Unfortunately, the allowable tax levy is a formula-driven, it's formula-driven. So we have, we're kind of held to how we have to calculate it. I, I could go over the calculation if you'd like to. I just, I'd like to stress that the allowable tax levy really is, is not enough. We end up having to incorporate our reserves to make ends meet because we're restricted. They talk about in the formula, and I, I just want to go over it for a second because it's, it's easier to talk about when you're looking at the numbers. You know, the way that the formula is set up, we are dictated to how much it can grow from year to year. So the state dictates an allowable growth factor for our town, it's a different, or our school district, excuse me, not our town, our school district, it's different for every school district in the state. And that's really about the change in property values in our community. And that's how they determine that 1.0020. So we're allowed to increase our tax levy by that much, which is, equates to $78,000. We can take off what we had for debt expense from last year and then add in the new amount for debt expense this year. And then the CPI, the, the inflation factor that we can add is only 2%. So although we're seeing a six, seven, eight, nine, depending on what area of, you know, of materials or supplies that we're getting, services that we're getting, we can only add 2%. So the money that we're allowed to add to the tax levy without going to a supermajority vote doesn't cover any, nowhere near what we need to cover in the increases in the budget. So that's why when we get to the bottom line, we usually end up having to incorporate reserves. And I, and I want to make it clear that when we allow ourselves to not maximize the tax levy because we are thinking about, we're always keeping our taxpayers in mind. We don't want to raise it to the maximum amount if we don't have to. Yes, we don't have to, but when we leave ourselves open to a future deficit because we decided not to add money to the allowable levy, we're going to deplete our reserves. They're going to go down to nothing because we can't make the ends meet that don't, you know, if they're not accounted for in the levy or in the other types of revenue that we're getting. So I just, we can go over that more when we talk about the budget, but I think it's something to impress upon people at every meeting that we have because not everybody understands what goes into that. So then we have our state mandates, and of course, those are things that are passed down to us from the state and federal government. There are conditions that we have to meet to provide certain services to our students. And sometimes, or most of the time, they're unfunded. Some parts of them are funded, but not all of it. An example would be obviously the inflation. We're not, they're not allowing us to either give us money towards aid towards inflation or we're not allowed to raise taxes towards, to cover that inflated cost, and so how do we come up with it? It has to come from local tax dollars. I mean, there is no other way unless we want to, you know, diminish the programs that we're offering. Another thing is this large amount of data reporting that we're all having to face in, I know the business office, district office, but not only, in the school buildings as well. And sometimes, the benefit of that work doesn't even, you know, it outweighs the cost. So for our district, that reporting may mean not much to the state. They're really trying to get some of that information from like New York City school districts and things like that to provide equity to districts that don't really have equity in them or need help with their transparency reporting to see what, how much money they're spending in each building. We still have to do all of that reporting, even though it doesn't, it may not affect us in the long run. But they use that as a measurement tool and it just creates a lot of work for us. So a lot of mandates that are put on the district don't necessarily apply to us, but we still have to live up to them. Our vendor contracts, we're seeing, again, high inflation rate. Our transportation contract is in fairly good shape. We negotiated it five years ago. We have a 2% cap on that right now, so I feel comfortable with that. But our software, our technology, our utilities are, you know, through the roof. Between the gas prices, even though we have state gas prices, we are still, you know, they're still double of what they were. So if they were $1.50, while the, every, you know, everyday citizen was paying $3 a gallon, we were paying $1.50. Now, we're paying $3 a gallon, you know? So that's on our buses. For, as far as the fuel goes for the buildings, we all know we're operating in a very economical situation with our geothermal heating, but we also do have some oil at the elementary school that's costing a fortune. Hopefully, we'll be able to move forward in a future year, maybe convert the rest of the building over to geothermal. We'll have to see how that works out with the planning. The electricity, we're under a rate right now that's, you know, locked in, but again, when we renegotiate that, which is due in November of 2023, I'm sure that we won't be paying what we're paying now. So the refuse, the waste disposal, that's a new bid that we have to bid out this year. I'm expecting to see an increase there. Our BOSEs costs are going up, of course, for the same reasons that ours are going up, right? They pass it back to the school districts because they have to. It becomes part of their cost, so it becomes part of our cost. They don't operate at a profit, BOSEs. They have to, we have to share that expense amongst all the 18 districts that are in the Putnam, Northern Westchester BOSEs. So again, we're looking for community support, voter approval. This is all a challenge when it comes to budget time, and I think people need to get out and try to understand how the budget is planned and how much work goes into it and how many years. We need to look forward. We can't just look at the current year that's coming up. We need to always have a multi-year plan, which is why we're going through this, trying to explain what the challenges are in developing a budget from year to year. And again, achieving that balance for programs and finances as well. So here are the things that are going to impact our budget. This coming year, our instructional salaries, again, contract negotiations with the PVFT and the non-instructional staff, CSEA, getting those settled before June 30th. Expecting, we are expecting some savings through retiring employees. Unfortunately, we're going to be losing about seven or eight people this year. I mean, to their, to their benefit, not to ours, and that will create a little bit of savings for the district. I estimate around $150,000. The healthcare costs, we're going to see an increase in the premium of 5.5%. I talked about it last year. We saw 8%. It's 5.5. I don't know if we're out of the woods with that yet, if we will be this year or not. We are seeing a lot of, you know, influx of claims and whatnot. I'm on the board for the healthcare consortium in Putnam, Northern Westchester, so I'm very close to it. So I'm hoping that this 5.5% increase is not an indication that it's going to continue, that we're going to flatline pretty soon, but we'll see. Retiree health costs have always been an issue. People are living longer, that's good for them, but it is costly and, you know, the way that contracts were developed over the years were that retirees got benefits from districts, and they still do, and they still remain to do that. We have some things we're negotiating in contracts now that hopefully will try to mitigate some of that, but no news on that front yet. Pension rates, I mentioned our employees' retirement system, our teachers' retirement system. The rates are increasing. Unless they go over 2%, I can't factor that into the tax cap. It doesn't allow me, the, the formula does not allow me to do that. And it's not 2% combined, it's 2% on each one. Social Security taxes, so payroll taxes, they're still at the same rate, 7.65%, but it's of your salaries. So when your salaries go up, your FICA payroll taxes go up. Transportation contract, I mentioned, 2%. Our vendor contracts, anywhere between 2 and 8%, I'm estimating, you know, obviously inflationary-driven. We're trying to fill vacant staffing positions and then the retiring folks. I don't believe we're adding people to the staff this year. We'll talk about that more when we discuss the budget. Just finding people to replace the people we're losing is going to be a challenge in itself, especially in the area of transportation. We're losing quite a few folks in our transportation office, drivers as well as monitors. That's a campaign for people to apply for those jobs. Our allowable tax levy limit at first calculation, estimated, first run at it, 3.4% is what the allowable limit will be, based on my calculations, but we, again, we don't have aid information to solidify that number. The state foundation aid is being restored, like I said, so that will help us out. That's a plus, that's a positive note. Short-term grant funds, again, expiring in September, they have helped us supplement our budget by allowing us to hire some extra people and account for some learning loss situations with students at certain grade levels, larger, smaller class sizes, et cetera. And then our capital infrastructure needs, we always need to keep them in mind. It's a constant, ongoing thing to keep our infrastructure intact. And the interest rates and aidability on that construction are very important to keep in mind. Our reserves, again, when we have a tax-impact capital change, capital infrastructure need, it can become costly. We try to keep that at a flat, a flat debt service amount so that we don't see that volatility. And the interest rates are volatile right now. So anything that we're planning on doing, we have to be careful. And we have to be careful to make sure that we maintain the reserves so that we can have tax-neutral capital change if we need to. So some of the considerations we need to take into account when we're doing a forecast, so not just the forecast, I said, like for the current upcoming year, we're looking at five years, you know, at least. Some districts, the recommendation is to look longer. It's, it's very difficult to look any longer than five years, but certainly having settled bargaining contracts, knowing where our aid stands, what are tax levy allowances and are going to be. Again, right now, it's law that they're capped at 2%, so there isn't much we can do about that except just know that. The retirement system contributions, again, if they fall below the 2%, it's impossible for us to add any money to, to the tax cap calculation. It has to be found in, somewhere within. So again, using reserve funds, how careful are we going to be doing that going forward? And so again, long-term fund balance and our capital needs going forward. And this I went over, the tax cap calculation. I know this is a lot of information. I tried to stress the, the points that are going to impact our budget the most. And if anybody has any questions about any of those things, I can chime in.
I know, I know you work on the budget really year-round.
It is true.
But it's, it's a lot to take in. But, you know, I appreciate you giving us all this now so that we can digest it.
Right, because I think when we go to talk about the budget, you know, if we don't preempt it with a little it with a little bit of conversation about what the challenges are that we're going to be facing, it comes as more of a surprise. There's not time to think about what you want to ask or what you want to incorporate into the new year. So these are the things that are outstanding right now.
Okay.
Never easy.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move into new business. Sam, if you'd read resolution one, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the 2023-24 school year budget timeline is per document 116/23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Angela Schaper from her position as a lunch monitor is per document referenced in the official minutes of this meeting as document number 122 over 23 and appoint Ms. Schaper to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on December 16th of 2022 and terminating on December 15th of 2026. In the teaching assistant tenure area on step one of the CSEA salary schedule and in accordance with the Putnam Valley Central School District policy, 9250, Ms. Schaper holds a teaching assistant level one certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Albert Goce, a cleaner from the district, effective the close of business on January 3rd, 2023 is per document 123/23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Violet Bouquet to a probationary appointment as a bus monitor effective January 3rd of 2023 with a probationary period of 52 weeks from January 2nd of 2024 in the transportation department on step three of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Martha Nieves-Maturi to a probationary appointment as a bus monitor effective December 16th, 2022 with a probationary period of 52 weeks, December 15th, 2023 in the transportation department on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Brandon Cassone to a probationary appointment of cleaner effective January 3rd of 2023 with a probationary period of 52 weeks, January 2nd of 2024 in the operation department on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number seven, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the risk assessment report is per document 118/23 prepared by the district's internal auditors, Nugent and House, those CPAs.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. I'd like to open it up now to public comment on any topic.
Hello.
Hello.
Krista Straub. I have one graduate from the district and a sophomore. I'm also the Moms for Liberty chair. I, it's been a couple of times, it's been a while since I've been here, so I'm kind of like behind, but I really wanted to thank you for the first responsive appreciation. It was really wonderful and I kind of, I really like brag about it because we're the only district that does something like that for all our families. And it, it kind of, it was in the elementary school, the middle school, the high school, and it was really, really appreciated by all of us. I also wanted to thank you for the discussion on the NISBA resolutions. I, I understand it takes a lot of time. You had mentioned the meeting is like four hours and I would, a lot, and some of the other chairs that, that I speak to say that a lot of the districts don't even participate, you know? So I really do appreciate the time that, that you do listen and you talked about the ones that I had asked for. There was one comment, though, that kind of irked me a little bit. It was about the outside groups, you know, being a slippery slope. And I don't know if that was directed at Moms for Liberty or the, the parents that were asking for these things, but I feel, you know, we have organized just like the teachers' unions have. And they've been involved in our school boards and a lot of decisions. And I don't believe parents organizing is kind of an outside group. So I just wanted to, to express that. And I really was just happy they were there. Parents' rights resolutions, to be honest. And, you know, no one ever really talked about it. It kind of like, we just let things flow through the system. And I think with this pandemic, it really opens up a lot of parents to paying attention to what's going on. And I'm really just happy that we're talking about it. I didn't expect it to be supported, but I really was just happy it was there. So I wanted to thank you for that. Moms for Liberty is a group, obviously, of parents that I had started here in the county, but it is all over our nation. We have 110,000 members now, 260 chapters, and we're in 43 states. We also have one this year, 272, 72 school board seats, and we flipped 56 boards. So the parents are involved, we're here. We're not going to give up on our rights. I know New York State may have a different plan, but we're here to tell you that we're not going to allow that. And we're going to run and we're not going to let the government make our decisions for our children, for their healthcare, for the way we raise them. They are ours, they are our children, they are your students. And I, I'm just really happy that we have this communication and that I've seen a lot of discussion about it, and I wanted to thank you. So thank you for your time, thank you for being here, and all the, all the hours you put into it. It's really appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks, Krista.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we're going to talk about presentation topics for upcoming meetings, besides the budget.
So our first meeting in January will be January 5th. That'll be our instructional presentation. As we discussed, sort of a collection of what was three, usually three separate building level presentations will now be one collective presentation. And then the meeting after that, January 19th, will be athletics will be back, but this time with a budget presentation, as well as our technology services presentation. So those are the next two coming up. And then obviously after them, we still have our facilities and special education presentations in February.
Yeah, I, I was really pleased to see the January 5th presentation as a K-12. I think, I think that gives us a different window, rather than look at each building separately, look at how they're linked and how, you know, the, everything we do is, is in, in an arc and not in silos. So I, I think that that's a new way of approaching it, but I think it's going to be really good. I think it's going to be a really good thing. How are we, like last year, we did parent or public nights where people could come and talk about, are we still, you know, their budget questions or their budget concerns? Are we still planning to use that model this year or?
So we've spoken about that, yes, and we're certainly willing to offer them. I think last year they were typically held in February and March. The, the issue now is there's still so many unknowns for us. It's hard to answer questions. But by the time we get through our presentations and our building and, and department budgets are done and we have more information from the state, then we're much, in a much better position to be able to help explain that to parents and answer any questions they may have once we have all the information. So it's a little premature right now, but certainly something that we would offer later in the, in the budget process.
I, I thought it was a good way of, you know, like Jill didn't come with like a presentation. She came really to just ask, what, what are your questions or concerns and try to answer them? I thought that was, I thought, I thought that was welcoming and I, I thought it went really well, so I was kind of hoping we'd at least, some of them could be like that, doesn't have to be all of them, but.
I agree with Dr. Luft that we should wait till we gather up all the pertinent information that is realistic. There's nothing worse than going into a meeting, not having the facts before you. And a lot depends on the contract negotiations and the state. So I, I think we hold it until you have that information.
Okay. Board member, comments on any topic?
Yeah, I, I, I have one. We've received numerous, a number of inquiries about this possible COVID mandate that the state wants to put on our, our schools. I, I, I would very much like the board to consider. And perhaps we can discuss this more fully at our next meeting. Sending a letter to the state, just making a stand saying that this epidemic, epidemic, I believe, is, is pretty much over at this point in time. The government has messed up for two years our education system. I mean, the stats show us that the COVID precautions that we're taking have set our kids back academically in so many areas. The government practically destroyed our economy with their mandates. I think at this point in time, anything COVID related should be up to the families and the parents. That's my own personal opinion, but I really believe that a letter to the state by this board saying that enough is enough, let it be, let our parents decide whether their children should have the vaccine or not. I mean, I just got, back in October, my fourth update of the COVID. I believe in it, but I would never force that on another individual. And we, we got a lot of inquiries to this, as you all know, through your emails. And I, I think we should at least consider doing that. You know, the board may disagree with me, this is my own personal opinion. You know, and like I said, we could take this up at next meeting.
Well, we're only three of five.
I know that.
So it's a little, you know.
It's not, it's not good to make any decision without the, the, the board president. I agree with you. But I want that as food for thought. The government's not always right, you know? It really isn't. And my, my, you know, 69 years here on this earth have, have shown me that to be true more times than not. Thank you. Thank you for the consideration and hopefully we can discuss this further.
Okay. Ellen?
I don't want to discuss that at this time.
Okay.
I think we need the other board members.
I agree.
And there's a lot more coming, I'm sure.
Okay.
Any other topics? Just to piggyback on Jeremy's report, the TOK presentations were amazing. Sam was there at all of them. I was there at two, Jeanette was there at one. They were great. The middle school concerts were amazing. Congratulations to your daughter. But the, the, the ability of, of the choral teacher to allow children voice, not in the songs that they picked, in the, in the way they presented, in what they had to say about the music, both the history and the, and the, the background of the music was just really great. And it was nice that it was, you know, before the holidays, kind of puts you in that gratitude, grateful mode. So I do appreciate the concerts. I'm sorry that, I hope the band concerts are packed again. I hope they're great. I love band concerts too, but anyway. Okay, I would like a motion to convene an elect, an executive session for four matters of the employment history of four particular persons and two matters of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the civil service law.
Just a quick question. Having two members missing, would it behoove us to wait and maybe do that when all five can be together?
Joe's going to be there by phone. So he's going to be part of it. And some of it, we really want to discuss now.
Okay.
If, if, if it's not, if there aren't enough of us or we feel like that.
I mean, we're, we're a quorum, so that.
No, I know, it's legally, it's a quorum, but if we feel that it's not, we need Jeanette and, and Joe physically present, we'll put it off. But we're going to start, at least start it now.
That's fine.
So I need a second?
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, I'm, the, this is, we are adjourning this meeting. There will be no business conducted after the executive session. Have a safe holiday.
Yes. Happy holidays to everybody.